To order the meeting of the Select Board on Monday, June 2. We are going to move into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, June 2, 2005, 5:30 p.m. in room 309 of the town office building at 400 Slocum Road. The Board will be discussing the following. Bliss Conner, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21ac, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation.
A3, sorry.
A3, thank you. To discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation arising out of disposal of solid waste and release site if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation, litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. Our second order will be to address the Veterans Service Officer, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return as close to 6 p.m. as possible, and at that time we have an affordable, a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, and then from there we will move right into our regular business of the Select Board meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. I am in panic now. All in favor say aye. No, roll call vote. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Middleton. Mickelson. I did it, oh my gosh, I poisoned myself.
We need to change the name place this way.
I think so, and Mr. Tattelbaum?
That is my name.
Also voting yes, thank you, that's, that's very helpful. All in favor, we are moving into executive session to return at 6 p.m. Thank you.
Smooth and silky.
Meeting of the Select Board of June 2, 2025. Our meeting is being recorded and shown live. All members are here, so we will be taking a roll call vote. We do not need to do it by roll call. At this point, I will ask everyone to stand for a Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And again, I ask everyone to remain standing in honor of our veterans, past and present. Keep them in our thoughts and out of harm's way. Thank you.
Commander Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we open the Affordable Housing Trust meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Neal, for the second. We'll now open the Affordable Trust meeting, of which we are the members of the Affordable Trust. Hello.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So as you just mentioned, by the nature of being a Select Board member, you also double as a trustee for the town's Affordable Housing Trust. It's been a while since we've had one of these meetings, but there has been some activities since the last time the board has met in this capacity. One being, there is a new trustee that we need to get added to the books, Christopher O'Neal. So the first item on the Affordable Housing Trust agenda is amending our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to add Chris as a trustee.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will sign him on.
Great. Second item on here is just a brief update in terms of our accounts and how much funding the Affordable Housing Trust is currently sitting on. Altogether, it's just under about $638,000, about $500,000 of which is through CPA funds to advance the Affordable Housing goals of the town. So no actions needed for that, just more or less an update for the members, as do how much is available in that account. The last item on here is a draft request for proposals. So one of the programs that the Affordable Housing Trust administers is our Home Buyer Assistance Program. The program has been on, put on pause the last couple of years at the recommendation of our former consultant because of instability in the market and home prices going up. What we found at the time was the funding that we had available wasn't enough to really be able to adequately assist low to moderate income home buyers. So what we'd like to do is now that the market is stabilized, or as much stabilized as much as it can be, we would like to put out RFP for consultant services to help us retool the program and ultimately get it back up and running so that people can apply. So the draft here proposed would have this going out later this week with a deadline of later this month so that we can get the ball rolling. So just looking for authorization to do that.
So moves.
We have the motion moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So Chris, that means you're going out for the RFP for the consultant services.
Correct.
And we have a deadline at the end of the month. And then can you just talk about the timeline of once we are ready to go, that what the timeline looks like for residents or future residents, too?
Absolutely. So as it's currently laid out, what we'd look to do is have the RFP close in June. We would score the RFPs and hopefully award a consultant here in the month of July. That consultant would work through the middle of the fall, at which point we'd have the program updated with the goal of advertising the program between the fall and the early winter. So hopefully, in the spring, we could issue those awards.
And the awards that we offer, we will then have those two accounts, which account for $633,000 and change. We will then have that money to be distributed. And will the consultant discuss with us what it looks like for how much we should be fund, like our goal would be to fund all of our money, but how many different homeowners we can assist?
Yeah, so exactly. So they'll consult us on how much we should make available. They'll also look at some other programs where we can leverage other programs, other funds, to ultimately assist the home buyers. And, you know, I guess through the end of this process, we'll have an idea of with the money on hand, how many residents we can assist. And that'll also give us some good guidance going into next year, should the Affordable Housing Trust want to seek additional funds through CPC.
And we would do that in the, on the Springtown meeting?
On target for the Springtown meeting.
So next June, so we'll, by this time next year, we will hopefully have expended some of those funds.
Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Vitale? Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we close the meeting of, adjourn the meeting of the-
Affordable Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing Trust and go into regular session.
Seconded, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. We will now move into our regular session. So our first order of business, we have a big group here, Troop 13 girls and Crew 1776 recognition. I believe that's-
Doug?
Yes. Want to just come up and introduce?
You can tell us. Yep, and state who you are and-
Good evening. My name's Doug Belcher. I'm the advisor for Crew 1776. And as one of the requirements for merit badges for citizenship in the community, these scouts need to attend a meeting. There are other requirements that we'd like to discuss afterwards with Mr. Mickelson. And that's about it. I mean, every once in a while, we'll, you know, come to a meeting and check it out. That's it.
The tough way to earn a merit badge.
A lot of them.
So Mr. Mickelson, this was a group that you brought to our attention.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I'm an old Boy Scout. I'm an old Boy Scout. So when I was a Boy Scout, my dad was a scoutmaster, so I didn't have much choice. But I did enjoy it. I spent many years, many, many years, but I can tell you, and I tell a lot of people this, our troop in New Bedford had 110 Boy Scouts.
Belcher?
Wow.
Twenty-four?
Troop eight.
Troop eight?
Yeah. Over 100 Boy Scouts with 12 full, no, full-time, with 12 gentlemen that helped out the scoutmaster.
This is a big troop.
So they had 13 adults.
Wow.
And we had our own, we had our own building, we had our own area that we could meet and call our own. It was a big thing in those days. There was not a lot of distraction.
Right. Right. There's a lot of stuff that kids do now.
It was a lovely time to grow up, and it's, and I'm fortunate that I was able to be part of that. But I'm still very dear to my heart. My mother and father, again, were very much involved in scouting, and it'll never, it never leaves you. You're always part of scouting. I welcome you guys here today.
Awesome. Thank you.
So who is with you here from your, your crew?
Can we bring them up?
Is everybody in front of us?
From the crew, we have Liz Santos, the president.
Are you with the crew?
My son, Dougie, he's the quartermaster for the crew.
Excellent. So as part of earning the merit badge, you came tonight, and you'll either attend or watch future meetings?
Correct.
We'll attend.
Oh, attend?
Yeah.
All right. Attend in person. All right. We look forward to having you.
I know you had mentioned you were on it to do some other things, and I noticed in your verbiage for the, for the crew, you got 1776. As you know, next year is our 250th as a country.
Mm-hmm.
So is that kind of dovetailing into a little bit with the crew?
Time ahead, time ahead.
All right.
Sorry. So I'm the first Eagle Scout in the town of Dartmouth, the first female Eagle Scout in the town of Dartmouth.
Congratulations.
Let me say that. Thank you. So once I aged out of scouting, I decided that I wanted to join a crew. And we ended up starting a crew out of the same charter that we have for the scout troop. And we were trying to figure out what number we wanted, and everyone said, "Crew 13, Crew 13." And I was like, "Nope, 1776, done and done. America, that's all." So I think for the 250th anniversary for the Fourth of July, I want to do something for the crew, and I want to do something kind of big and do like a little extravaganza, I guess.
I'm going to give you a name, and you can maybe talk to her. Name is Diane Gilbert.
Oh, I work very close with her.
Because she's organizing some things.
A lot of stuff with the Aiken House.
Diane is, right. So there's some, I know she's, she's looking to do some things, so this might also, you know, kind of fit right dovetail with you guys.
We'll be at the Aiken House in a few weeks doing the campout for the olden days.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I also have on here Troop 13. Is Troop 13 also here?
That's all of us.
Oh, that's all of you. Oh, okay. All right. So you're all working towards that badge? Excellent. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item, we're going to hold on item B and move into item C. Dartmouth Waterstone, formerly the Preserve, their rental rate approval. And again, that's going to be Mr. Vitale coming up to talk to us about that.
Hello again. So in your packet, similar to previous years, you have a breakdown of the proposed rents for Waterstone, which is the renamed Preserve Development on Route 6. So this year, the proposed rental rates would be an increase of 9.1% from 2024. It is in line with HUD's income limits for 2025, and they are just seeking the board's approval.
Now, if I, this project is still under construction?
That's correct.
Do they have an, do they have an estimate that they will be able to be occupied at these rates this year?
There's no way they're going to be.
I thought so.
They're not going to open this year.
So I know we looked at it last year, and so we will probably look at it next year when they send the rental rates.
The purpose, the purpose of these is basically, it's their, they have to report back to state agencies, and they have to have an update on the rents.
Like HUD.
Yep. So they have to, they have to basically update. And if, even if, even if a building doesn't exist next year, they'll go through the same process next year.
Okay.
Because they still have to, they have to go back and report. So they have to keep the levels the way they're supposed to be.
And each of the multi-unit housing developments that we have use the same?
Pretty much. Depends upon, depends upon-
The configuration of that. The configuration of that room.
Depends upon the program that they're in. If it's a straight conventional, they don't have to do any of this. If they're using any kind of government funding, 40B, 40R, whatever the- whatever it is, they have to go through this. They have to go through this.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Kathy Stanley to the microphone. All right, and we're going to hear the energy manager update.
Okay, Peter gave me lessons here, so bear with me. I'm Kathy Stanley. I'm the energy manager for the town of Dartmouth. It's very nice to be back before you. When Chris called me to ask me if I could drop in, I said, "Well, that's great timing because I just finished updating all the department heads." So I had handy slides for you. So we'll talk a little bit about green communities. We just filed our final report for our most recent green communities grant. We have to visit- do a site visit. And that's scheduled for the end of June with our green communities coordinator. Once that's done, the reimbursement checks are sent back to the town to reimburse for that grant. And we will then be eligible for participation in the next round of funding, which will be in October. So I'll be scheduling a planning session with John Burnett to talk about how he wants to direct some of this new money.
And that's with the school department?
Yeah, he's on very expensive date, John. I'm sure you're familiar with that. But I try to help out as much as I can there because we have so much to do. And I think we're in pretty good shape, town. The town buildings are all in pretty good shape. I circle back with him every now and then and he's- might need this or that. They're all really pretty small. But our schools are still needing quite a bit of work. So he and I will work on that. And then we'll apply for that. I think it'll be due probably in October. So that's what's going on with green communities. We just finished an energy efficiency and conservation block grant. That was a federal grant, flowed down through the state. DOE-R was the administrator for that grant. It was very limited in terms of what we were allowed to do with the money. The- pretty much the only energy efficiency work we could do was weatherization. And we did have a project scope at the Southworth Library that was- that we could apply for and get the grant for. So we were able to get a $2,500 incentive from the utility. That was completed in February. It was a US DOE grant. And we were able to wrap that up before any frozen funds happened. So we got paid, which is always good because you never know. Okay. We just recently secured our aggregation funding for the next three years. So this is really important because we had an opportunity to lower our price. And timing is everything when it comes to this stuff, right? I mean, I wish I could predict it. It would not be great. But when we have an opportunity to lock in at a lower price, we took it. All 24 towns agreed that they were going to do this. And it's always an adventure locking this in because everybody has to be available on one- on the same day to sign this contract. And it was a real party. But we did it and we got it done. So our current price is $1,5784. And I think that is up in, what do I want to say, November?
Yep.
So our new price will be $1,4346.
Nice.
So I'm very pleased about that. And I just- I pulled some stats just so that you would know. I asked the good energy folks to give us a little rundown here. So we have 11,206 residents supporting- participating in our aggregation. 14.5% of our residents opt- do choose to opt out. We don't know exactly what the reasons are that they- it could be anything. They may choose to buy their own energy through another supplier contract that they manage on a really active basis. Some people are very savvy and they're, you know, participating. So that's possible. And out of the 11,206, 33 of our residents chose the higher-priced renewable product. So that's- those are the stats that I got for that. I don't know if anybody has any questions about this, but I'm happy to take them if we do.
Actually, I have more of a comment. First of all, I'm glad to see the price actually going down. Unfortunately, the delivery is killing everybody because everybody's complaining. And we're not only seeing it here, we're also seeing it in Rhode Island, where I have accounts that the delivery is almost twice the supply. For some reason, I have no idea. But the other thing, too, and this actually, I'm very sto- very stoked about it, is that the contract at this price is actually good for three years.
Yes.
Because we've been working with two years since the inception of the program. So now we got three years at 14. And to be honest with you, it's going to go up. There's no doubt about it. It's going to go up again.
Well, when we do this, I always look at this as, is there more potential upward pressure on the market or more potential downward pressure on the market? Is it more likely that we could wait and see a lower price or a higher price? And I agree with you. I think that there is more pressure, potential pressure upward on the market. So that's an argument for locking in a longer term. I'm very happy with this price. I think this is, I, you know, compared to- this is a residential price. So you can't really compare it to what a commercial entity would get. Commercial entities are going to enjoy a lower pricing just by the nature of the- of the load and the margins on the- with the suppliers, you know, can enjoy. So, yeah, I was pleased. And I- I live in Easton and my all-in number's 34 cents, just to give you an idea.
Where is Eversource?
I'm sorry?
What is Eversource charging?
I don't know what their current- I'd have to go in and look because it changes every three months. But I believe it is more than 14. I'd have to look, though. And in fact, if you go to our website and it takes you to the Dartmouth aggregation site, those numbers are all reported in there. So anybody who wants up-to-date information on that just can go to our regular Dartmouth website, go to the energy page and click on the aggregation. It takes you right to that updated information. Sorry, I don't have it. But it's easy to- it's easy to get.
The other- the other thing is, you say 33 residents have chosen the higher renewable price. What is that- what is that cost now compared to?
I think it's 17.
What it is now, right?
So.
So will it go down to 16?
I'd have to go in and look. I believe it will be probably a couple points higher, yeah.
Okay.
But as one of those 33 residents, it's because it's- it's a higher renewable-
Yes, it's 100%.
100% renewable energy.
Yes. And that allows you to-
Plus for the world.
Yeah, to do what you think is in your- is in the best interests of, you know. So I think that's great that we offer that option. But I did- I thought you might like to know. I can tell you, current news is telling me that Governor Healey has taken a long look at those line items that are in the delivery cost. She has promised to do things to reduce them. She isn't- I keep my eye on the globe because they're reporting on this constantly. I don't know specifically what she said. I know that there's been a reduction in mass save money that is tacked on to the delivery bill to help save money there. And I also know that there is some renewed interest in new pipelines, bringing natural gas from the shale areas of Pennsylvania through New York into New England. That's a- that's a long, drawn-out, long shot. But it's not a hard no anymore. If we were able to increase the amount of natural gas that's brought into New England, it would allow us to drop our electric supply costs. I don't see it actually necessarily affecting delivery. So that's what I've been hearing. And I try to keep an eye on things and do my best to keep Gary and Chris oppressed of any- yeah, up to date on anything that-
Terrific. Good news.
Is there anything that the consumer can do to put more pressure on a change for that supply?
Right, you're a congressman and you're- and you're senators. That's their job. And you're the state- the state congressman and state senators for Dartmouth. And I don't know who they are, but you guys do. And stay in touch with them because that's- that does matter. So, yeah.
Oh, did you have a question? Go ahead, Dave.
One- one point of clarification for the question. Just for anyone listening. You do this for a living for out-town municipalities? Is that what you do?
Yes, that's correct.
And you do it because you're able to pass- take your expertise and pass it around to these different towns, give them the advice you give us? Is that-
That's correct.
And you do it for- only in Massachusetts, or?
I have five municipal customers in Massachusetts, two in Rhode Island, and I'm a contractor for the MBTA.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Question. The Mass Save program. A little clarification there, if you could, too, because what I keep hearing about media is that we're getting- some of these high rates are being- because the money that the state had to pay for the Mass Save program, they're looking to get it back by raising these rates. Is that-
So the way the Mass Save program works is if you look on your electric bill under all of those different charges, there's a line item in there for energy efficiency charge. That funds Mass Save. So every single person pays into the Mass Save program.
So if I'm a user and have no interest in Mass Save and someone else does, then- then I'm compensating someone who's trying to save and do energy savings. And I'm not-
That's correct.
But it's coming out of my bill.
That's correct.
And how- all that Mass Save money is coming from? Or is it-
Yes.
The Eversource doesn't take on any?
No, it all comes from deductions from- from individual rates. Yeah, the energy efficiency charge on every bill, every commercial bill, every residential bill.
I was under the delusion, maybe, that there were people- we were using less energy, therefore it would be less investment for Eversource because they don't require as much energy. They had nothing to do with it.
No. It's just strictly funding the Mass Save program. I don't know if it makes you feel any better, but we are very big fans of the Mass Save incentive program here in Dartmouth.
I am, too, and I took advantage of it.
In fact, we don't do-
I was not under the impression that it was 100% funded by-
Yes.
By user.
Rate payers. It's all rate payer money.
It's regressive- regressive cost.
In fact, that's one of the reasons you have so much regulation because it's public trust funds. It's money that's being deducted from a- from a electric bill, from a residential customer, commercial customer, and used for the betterment of the community.
People choose to take advantage of it.
That's correct.
State enterprise fund.
Yes.
It's regressive.
Yeah, I mean, we don't do any projects in Dartmouth that we don't evaluate whether we can get an incentive for. And I know Chris and Gary have to spend a lot of their time signing those applications.
I've used two or three, and it's really well-regulated. The contractors are legit and they're consistent.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yep, procurement laws have to be followed. I mean, that's all part of my job. When I put together a green communities grant, every single one of our projects has to apply for incentives. I have to show that they've been applied for. I have to show what those incentive amounts are. Our green communities funding is reduced by the amount of the incentive because it's required. So it's- it's very- they do a very good job of making sure-
Is this unique in terms of other parts of the country, what we do here?
Oh, without a doubt.
I know solar is, but the Mass Save, too.
I believe it is, yes, it is unique. Because our rates are very high. So for us to do energy efficiency projects, when we save mon- when we save kilowatt hours and we save terms of gas, it makes a difference, a big difference. So we're- we have a lot of incent- our own incentive, never mind financial incentive, to keep our buildings as energy efficient as can be. I'm very proud of a lot of the buildings that, here in Dartmouth. The town hall has an energy usage index of 50. That is excellent. That- that number represents the number of BTUs per square foot that that building uses. And that allows us to compare it to other town halls. And we- we are very proud of our- our energy efficiency program here. I think we've done great. Once we got our new controls into the building, that was a couple years ago, and got things commissioned, that energy usage index dropped quite a bit. Most of our schools are great. I mean, the middle school, the high school, they're- they're very energy efficient for the type of building for- I mean, you know, you can't compare them to a brand-new net-zero school. But- but we do a really good job. And it's all becau- it's not really me. It's because of Tim and John and the team that really is- is doing the job there. So I help- I'm a- I'm their resource. I help them get money, get incentives. I keep them up to speed on what we can expect down the road for planning purposes and that kind of thing. But they're- they're the ones who do all the work. So they should be commended.
You have one more slide.
Yeah, we just did our own energy procurement here in Dartmouth. Gary and I locked in at 12:590 for electricity through 28, which I was really pleased about. I thought that was a very aggressive number, so. And so that's for our municipal buildings that have commercial rates. And natural gas, yeah, we're currently locked in from 5:24 to 4:27 at 684, which we couldn't touch that today. So, I mean, it would be great if we could. We'll keep our eye on it. But I don't see that happening again. But what- you never know, so.
Kathy, the 14346, where is that in comparison to some of the other aggregation programs in- in Mass?
It's right in there. It's right in there, I just saw Halifax lock in their aggregation and Stoughton, and it's, it's very, it's within tenths of a cent.
And what's the, the standard rate? Last year the standard rate was around what we were at, right, 15?
Yeah, it changes, so they change, so the basic service rate.
So we don't know what that number is yet or?
I don't have it right here, but I, I could go find it. But I think we were consistently under basic service with except, with the exception of one small time period where they were over. And again, what we're looking for is a net savings over the whole life of the contract.
You think we'll be below the standard rate?
Yeah, I wish I could tell you that for sure, because I'd be visiting my money somewhere, but. But we can hope, right? It certainly, I believe there would be more upward pressure on the market than downward. So I think there's more risk it'll go, that'll go up than that we've locked in too high.
How long do they set the standard rate for?
For residential customers, it's six months, and for commercial customers, it's three. And by law, they can't hedge any pricing.
Is it a set date, July 1st?
No, it's, it's kind of, it's, yeah, it's just, they're not allowed to hedge pricing. The rate, when we deregulated electricity in early 90s and natural gas in the late 80s, that was asked and answered at the rate cases at that time, the department said, "You cannot gamble with the rate pairs money, you will not be hedging anything. You pass it through, you can make no money on this, the utilities do not care who you use to get your electricity from. They don't make any money on it, it's a pure pass-through, whatever you want to do is fine with them." So that's also something that you want to make sure people understand, that they're not hurting their utilities, or the utilities are not legally allowed to markup an energy. They are only allowed to profit by charging for the local use of their wires and pipes.
Thank you.
Delivery.
Any other questions on this?
Thank you.
Is that it? Oh, one more.
One more.
New rules, large building energy reporting, or LIBRA, one of my favorite things. So, we have to disclose our usage data for all buildings greater than 20,000 square feet, starting in June of 2025. So the first thing that happened was the Department of Energy Resources sent me a list of all the buildings that they said were larger than 20,000 square feet, and the first thing I did was make sure that was true. Because you know what's going to happen down the road, is they're going to start making us do those EUI calculations, right? That energy usage per square foot thing. So, in sorting through that data, we were able to knock a few buildings off that list that they said were 20,000, when in fact they weren't. We had to do some homework and get some floor plans, and everybody pulled together, and we got done what we needed to get done. In one case, I think there was a water tank that they said was 20,000 square feet. So, we said, "No, that's a water tank, can't have that one." So we did do that audit of our own facilities, we did submit all of our reporting as far as claiming our buildings and filling out the reports in time, we are in compliance with LIBRA now. The other thing that happened was, as a municipality in Massachusetts, we get to participate in Mass Energy Insight, which is a database of energy. So, the utilities push all of our utility information into this database, and then I get to go look at this giant spreadsheet and figure out what is important to people and send it to them and that kind of thing. It's a very useful tool for energy managers. So, I, since I have five municipalities, they, DYO reached out to me and said, "Do you want to be part of a pilot where we can push the MEI data to Energy Star, and you won't have to do anything to comply with LIBRA?" I was like, "Yes, I want to do that." So, we've done that, all of, all, Dartmouth and the other four municipal customers that I have have all pushed their MEI data to Energy Star Portfolio Manager, which is the tool that the state wants us to use. We have set up our accounts under Energy Star Portfolio Manager, and our data now just automatically gets pushed only for those buildings I have designated as over 20,000 square feet. So that makes life really easy for us, so I was really thrilled about that. So we're in compliance, that's it. So that's what I have, I could talk forever, you know that, so, but I won't, and if there's any questions?
Well, so far tonight, it sounds like good news.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you very much.
One unrelated question, last time you were kind enough, you gave us a little update on nuclear power, and maybe you could do a little of that for us today?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So, there were recently four executive orders that were signed in the past two weeks, approving a substantial amount of funding for nuclear. There is a, there is a big push to revamp our permitting for nuclear facilities. Our permitting process at, at the federal level is very, very cumbersome and very, very expensive, and it needs to be revamped, so that is an undertaking that is going to happen. There are, as you've heard me talk about small modular reactors before, it's a new nuclear technology which contains all of the nuclear energy, the uranium inside the device so that it doesn't have a potential for a leakage or a failure. Those have been approved for commercial sale now. So there are a number of companies that are manufacturing and selling SMRs in the States. One of those companies is called Newscale, if you want to just check their website, that's a great place to go for information. Or you can just Google SMRs, or small modular reactors. So, that's a, a big deal, that we're now finally able to start selling commercially some of our newer technologies that our national labs have been working on for many, many years. And we can start expanding some of our nuclear technologies in areas where, that might have been formerly coal or formerly other types of technologies which are not friendly to the environment. I've seen some motion from HEALI as well in allowing for an easier time of permitting nuclear technology in some of our other sites in Massachusetts, and so that's very good news as well in terms of making nuclear energy easier to permit and easier to, to implement. It's important to, it's important for us all to understand that we're really behind the eight ball here globally. There have been other countries that have been using nuclear energy for many, many years. Francis, one of them, I was just talking with David about this earlier, that 98% of their uranium is all reused, they don't have any waste. So their technologies are way, way ahead of ours, and we need to catch up because it's going to be very important for us to have a secure, clean form of energy that's dispatchable. And that's the key thing, that the grid, the New England Power Grid, the people who actually manage the power that come through our wires today have six hours of resiliency. That's not good enough, we need to do better than that. So, if you had a dispatchable form of energy that was clean, that you could count on, you would, you would do way better than that.
And nuclear is by far the cheapest way to produce.
Without a doubt.
The new technologies address the, the scope and cost of the projects, and now you're saying it's even addressed the safety of the disposal of the waste. Is there any other downside to it? Major downside, those are pretty big downsides.
Yeah, I mean, with nuclear, the problems, the concerns have always been safety and waste. And they're valid, but, so they have to be addressed. But a lot of these new technologies have been focusing heavily on that. And we need to get a lot more of our young people engaged in engineering and nuclear engineering. We have very few, so many of our people in this business are, you go to an American Nuclear Society meeting, and everybody is either 26 or 78. And that's it, there's no one, there's no, you know, people just didn't go into this field because they felt there was no future in it. So we really need to beef up our recruiting for those engineering students that might be interested in this type of science.
So Kathy, does, the SMRs, are those included in the 24 Climate Act implementation plans?
I think they are, I'd have to go back and look, but I know they were, I asked my son, my son's a nuclear engineering PhD candidate at UT, and I asked him if SMRs were considered renewable. And he said, "That's a good question," and I think there's, there's some work that needs to be done to clearly make that the case. The bottom line needs to be, that waste has to be recyclable. And the technologies that exist, we don't have. So could we do it? Yeah, we would have to hire the French to do it for us. So those are, that's where things get tricky. Are that, can they be? Yeah, they can be, if we partner with the French and use their proprietary technology and pay for it, or develop our own.
We assume now it's just probably just the wind projects, trying to get those on, on land at this point.
Fascinating, it's always great, personally, it's great to have you here, it's been amazing.
It's my pleasure, I enjoy coming to, to talk with you folks, and I'll be back.
It's nuclear, is there any movement on other renewable sources of energy?
There's always, I'm doing a presentation at the end of the month for the Association of Energy Engineers in Cleveland. I try to attend their conferences whenever I can, and I'm going to be focusing on renewable and clean technologies. So I'm, I'm chairing a panel of four speakers. I have one speaker that's geo, that's going to be talking about geothermal, and another speaker that's going to be talking about solar PV. Their presentations were originally designed around the Biden-era renewable tax structure. We're going to have a brand-new tax structure, we're not all exactly sure what that's going to look like, but we do know that we're going to have to be a little more creative about how we fund and finance and how the economics of some of these renewable technologies come together. We're also talking about, one of my presenters is going to be a, a brand-new technology, for example, where you have waste steam coming from a small manufacturing plant that can spin a turbine and make electricity that's used on-site by that facility. So these kinds of technologies where there isn't any incentive required, there isn't any tax benefit required, it's just pure savings, where you're taking waste energy and you're going to convert it to electricity. So, and there's, there's tons of these little startups and companies like this that are, that are doing this work. So I also have a speaker on SMRs, but that's selfish because I just want to see my kid, so anyway. So yeah, there's all kinds of things happening, and I don't think, I, I, from what I've been able to see, I don't think people are just turning away from geothermal or solar. I think it's just going to have to be reevaluated from the financial aspects and the economics. Like, some of it might make sense, some of it might have to be reorganized or restructured, so that it does, you know?
Facts, facts and numbers.
Yeah.
Are you seeing any on the flip for the fossil fuels?
Certainly not in Massachusetts. There has been absolutely no change in policy in terms of, there is no funding for fossil fuels. I can't get any incentive money to replace our gas boilers in this building. So I have already done an electrification technical study with Eversource, they paid for it, for us to determine if we can move to an electrification plan, a heat pump plan, if and when our boilers fail. They're not in any danger of failing, they're doing fine, and Tim does a great job, but.
The cost is enormous.
Yes, the cost is enormous, so if they're going to give me the money, that's one thing, right? But it can be that kind of, a kind of situation where we might want to, we've already done a complete weatherization project for this building. We have a great controls system in place here. Those are the things that you want to be doing with your facilities. While you plan for heat pumps, before you go there, you should weatherize your building, make sure insulation is good, put in a good controls package, make sure you're using your energy wisely. You want to be as energy efficient as you can be, you don't, you don't want to waste anything, you want those EUIs nice and low. And then, you take advantage of potentially, you have a chiller that goes down. All right, so at that point, you take a look at those, those rooms or that section, and you say, "Maybe we'll do a heat pump for that section," and move those rooms to a heat pump for cooling, and then introduce electricity, electric heat pump for heating, but only during the shoulder months, and we keep our hot water for the very coldest times. And it's that kind of strategy that's going to help us get to where we need to be, still taking advantage of all of the potential money that's out there without compromising our own ability to make good decisions for our buildings. That's what we're really about.
Thank you, very comprehensive, thank you, anyone else?
Sure, it's always good to see you guys.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy. All right, next on our list is the CERTA Advisory Committee reappointment.
I'm sure you have in front of you the certificate to sign.
And the CERTA Advisory Committee, we will be appointing our representative as Chris Vitale and the designee as Gary Carrero.
Show moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you're taking on one more role, thank you very much for that. All right. Next, we have the Fee Waiver Policy Review and Adoption. As you remember, we looked at this initial proposal back in April. We asked, we tasked Mr. Vitale with taking that draft to the boards and departments that are involved in issuing permits and fees for a variety of reasons. And after meeting with them, Chris has an updated version to discuss with us. All yours, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi, so in your packet, you do have an updated version. It builds off the prior draft that we went over at a previous meeting. Difference here is, you know, based on feedback, we built out the evaluation section a little bit more. So, under each of those categories for the review criteria, we've also included subcategories that go over, you know, different conditions or considerations that the board would look at that would help you determine whether or not they've satisfied that requirement. So, it's not a comprehensive list, certainly open to be amended, but, you know, based on the discussion with the board, based on the discussion with our staff, we feel that the policy is good to move forward. I will make one note, I did have a typo.
I had one, page 47.
Huh?
Page 47 of our.
Is it page 47?
I had a typo.
Okay, you have found a typo, okay.
Maybe it's the same one.
Okay, maybe, but I, I would just say that, you know, if this is adopted tonight, it would just be approved and, you know, with those amendments, and we'll go and clear the typo up.
What was your typo?
Uh, page, under general rules and standards, number, number three, on our page 47.
Okay.
The last sentence says, "Fee waiver reduction requests must be submitted prior to the insurance." I believe that should be issuance.
Yes, we found the same one.
All right.
Same one, yeah, good job. Chris, if you could just talk to us a little bit about discussions with the different departments that you met with. The, the draft itself looks different, and in this one, we do list, we have a list of permit types that could be included.
Yes.
Very clear, the exemptions and.
So, this policy and the draft has evolved, has the conversation with the board and amongst our departments has been ongoing. So, really, the list of eligible permits is based off of, really, I think, the driver of the board's discussion when it, with the building permit fees, I think really that's how this conversation started. And, you know, in talking with the board and trying to get a better understanding about how the other departments handle it, I did send off this draft to other land use departments. Now, what I found in those conversations was, most of those different boards and departments don't have conditions that they waive these fees unless it's something for municipal use. So, this would be something that I think has served as good guidance. I know recently our Board of Public Works, you know, this copy was provided to them, and that helped guide a decision for fee or waiver that was before them for consideration. So in that respect, I already see it providing value to our different departments, even if they're not necessarily falling under this policy. So, there's a little bit of consistency there, but I think what's nice about this and how it's written is it gives the board discretion in the future, should you want to make amendments, should there be additional permits that you want to incorporate under this policy. You know, we have the means to do so.
Mr. Tadlebaum?
The idea is, bottom line, try to be consistent throughout so that we're fair with all these decisions. But it also gives us fairly high discretion as a board to make adjustments if we feel it's, it's warranted. So it does, are we able to do any work or any evidence from other towns incomparable? Is there anything similar to this in how it works, and are there issues about consistency?
Yeah, so, in the other policies that I've seen, this would be very much in line with what other communities do. You know, with that being said, we did, you know, customize it to fit our needs here. And just with regards to the specific permit types, for example, the policy exemptions that have been past practice, we incorporated those within this draft. You know, and the other thing is, we did build out the procedure section because, again, we just wanted to be very clear for anyone requesting this, what that process looks like, to make sure that we're equitable for anyone who comes before us for that consideration.
My point is, it still gives a lot of discretion on this board, and I guess, that's my impression. Am I, anybody agree or disagree with that in terms of, does it?
I didn't feel that it gave us, that it operated in a lot of discretion, that we would be able to change things on a case-by-case. I thought that it was very clear on what we should be doing and how we should be making our decisions. What we're, I guess what we're weighing in, you know, the procedure and the evaluation, the review criteria that we have to go through, I think that it's, we've never had anything like this. I mean, I think it's great to have a.
I do too, I'm not debating the.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess my question is that you have to have some, some sense of flexibility, which comes only from this board, and basically that's what we have, and we try to tighten, tighten the ship as much as we can regarding how the boards handle their decisions until it comes to us, is that?
This comes directly to us. So, this isn't something that, the reason that we had Chris meet with the other departments is, one, we didn't have anything, and when we were being asked, not necessarily as a board or even as individuals, or other boards were being asked to waive a fee, we didn't have anything, any documentation that said why or who or how any of that should happen, and we really felt that it would be who of us, you know, to have something to refer to, to say to someone, either you fall into these categories and therefore you, you should and could file the Town of Dartmouth Fee Waiver Reduction Application, or what you're asking for is not consistent with our policy. So I don't know, I don't, I guess I don't understand your, your question, Dave, are you asking for more gray?
No, 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 not at all, I, I, but I'm, I guess I'm, I don't want to belabor it. I think it, and listening and thinking about it, it gives us the tools we need to make a decision, but also it gives us a certain amount of flexibility.
And some issues.
Certain, right.
Certain criteria, just add one thing.
Yes, Gary?
Yeah, so I think if you compare this to, let's say, the DPW board, who also acts as the water sewer commissioners, it gives them guidance to take case-by-case as they come along, and vet that out amongst the board, and allows them some guidance, and some, maybe some leniency to, to, to work with whoever's coming with, you know, approaching them. Not having this allows, you know, gave the board no guidance at all. And I think this sets a corner, you know, cornerstone to maybe have this as a living document that, that this could change. document that this could change over a period of time. Not to say that it's, you know, it's draft right now, if the board approves it tonight, but it gives complete guidance to the board to take on cases one by one. As an example, you know, water sewer commissioners, Board of Assessors, any kind of board that's making a determination on a project or a fee or a presentation that's set in front of them, I think it gives guidance to the board where it wasn't there before.
And if those boards didn't have anything in writing.
It would be willy-nilly.
Us doing this has certainly made them kind of stand up and realize they need to have something in writing.
Most boards and committees do have some stuff on fees.
DPW, happy with this process?
Well, DPW was spoken to, but this, they're not part of this.
No, I understand, but they're going to use it as guidance.
Yeah, so just in my conversation, he was satisfied with it, he referred it to the board, and they did take it into consideration when they were considering their own fee waiver that was before them. You know, I think more information and guidance is helpful, and, you know, as Gary said, what's nice is, you know, if there are adjustments that we need to make as, you know, these potential applications come through, or if the priorities of the board change where maybe there's a certain type of initiative that the board wants to support, you know, it provides the board with the flexibility to update this review criteria at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
You're welcome. Mr. O'Neal.
So it's still, well, for clarification, Dave, I don't think the DPW board didn't adopt this form.
No, they didn't.
But they use it as guidance, meaning they'll, you know, take reference to it. But we still have in this document a hundred percent affordable housing, correct?
That's correct.
So the project has to be a hundred percent affordable in order to be even considered for any reduction. Chris, what do you think we, what things would be addressed, you know, what gaps would be addressed in that housing production plan if we adopt this and give some relief in certain applications?
So I think.
I'm looking like for incentive, you know, where's the incentive?
So I think the incentive is for certain types of developments, certain types of applications, you know, I would treat this as an incentive for proposed future development, where, you know, we're under our 10% affordable housing threshold, and this really defines the fact that we want to prioritize projects that are comprised more percentage of affordable housing units versus maybe a commercial rate development. So, you know, I think just putting that distinction on there, you know, having a developer, a commercial developer come in and they put in one affordable unit, you know, I don't think that that's sufficient. You know, but again, each of these items, it's guidance for the board, and really, at any point in time, if that percentage amount wants to be changed, you know, now or at a future date, based on the type of developments, the type of applications we see, you know, again, I think it's nice that we have the flexibility to do it.
So I'm thinking, if at some point, say, the planning board proposes some type of mixed-use zoning, right, and that's what the town decides in their production plan that they want to, that they really want to get behind, then we could use this form as an incentive for those, for those projects that would like to see mixed use, right? So I can see that becoming important when it comes to this form. But I don't think we're ever going to see an affordable housing project that's at a hundred percent. So we're never going to really get a bite at the apple for an incentive to increase the, you know, affordable housing number.
I don't think the, not the size of the current projects that we're looking at, but certainly if someone wanted to do it at, on a smaller scale, a hundred units versus, you know, what they're looking at, maybe someone would. We do have affordable housing currently, you know, large projects, we haven't had one in a very long time.
Yeah, I don't think, I can't think of one that was a hundred percent affordable.
Crossroads.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, at least for here, you know.
Right.
You know, based on what the board's pleasure is, you know, that percentage, we can certainly amend that here as part of the final draft.
I wanted to get a kind of a feel from the board of how they felt about that, because I don't, I don't think it'll ever come up if we keep it at a hundred. But, you know, if that's the goal, the housing production plan is, you know, to be referenced, then the, any increase in affordable housing would be important to the town. So if we do that, in this document, we're not really taking it seriously if we keep it at a hundred, because we're not going to have a project come through at a hundred, I don't know. Stanley, what do you think?
Stan?
But that depends on how much you want to invest in affordable housing. I don't think it's in our best interest to have a hundred percent large projects of affordable housing. It's not in our best interest, as far as I'm concerned.
Go ahead.
The point is that the economics don't work for a hundred percent at this point in time anyway. So that, therefore, they're not going to be considered just for that reason alone, but is that enough reason to keep it at a hundred percent? You felt, Chris, you felt it was a good idea to leave it at a hundred?
No. Oh, not Chris, sorry.
You know, my initial thought of setting that at such a high percentage, and, you know, I appreciate having the conversation on it.
Yep.
Is, you know, I think it's one thing to incentivize a commercial development, and maybe this is, you know, the gap that's needed to, you know, find a project that's attractive for someone coming in. You know, I think on the residential side, if you don't set a little bit of stricter parameters, I just think there's more application, there's more potential for someone coming in requesting a fee waiver that, you know, it might not be something typically entertained by other municipalities. You know, a lot of other municipalities don't even have affordable housing as something that they reference. But again, it's something, as a past practice, this board has entertained waiving fees for, you know, residential affordable housing development. So, you know, at least from where I'm standing, does it have to be a hundred percent? No, I also think that 25% threshold, especially right now when we have multiple 40B applications that are 25%, the other side of this too is, you know, and Randy mentioned in a previous meeting, but the fees that we collect in from these developments are significant. So if we're waiving, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, or they're eligible to be waived tens of thousands of dollars, you know, is the 25%, is the board comfortable with that? And I don't necessarily want to put the 25% on paper if there's not that, that support from the board.
That's a fine line, right? Is it enough of an incentive to actually draw our investment? I don't think so.
Right, is it enough an incentive, but as, as the discussion that Chris had with Randy, at what point are we giving the farm away? Because, I mean, we're, these fees and assessments that we collect do, are part of our budget, is how we build our budget. So if we're, as he said, giving tens of thousands of dollars away on fees, and that certainly is something that, you know, we have to look at in, in the departments that we would oversee here, assessors needs to look at their departments, the Board of Public Works look at their departments, and, you know, I'm going to use them as an example, we have identified through long-term and short-term range planning that the DPW has got a number of projects that they need to address. So if one of the ways that they're looking at are through their assessments of current property owners and their fees of future owners through the fees, those assessments all go to support the improvements and the running of the DPW operation.
Yep.
So it's, I think it is a very fine line.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, when you look at the markets, you look at, you know, what type of market we've seen over the last, say, 10 years. There's a lot of interest in this town as far as residential development, but markets change. So if that starts to flip, and now we're trying to be more competitive against the other towns, cities and towns, I'd like to have a tool that, like this, that makes us a little bit more nimble, right? So we're going to stay competitive, no matter what happens with the market. And if we need to draw a commercial development, say, at, you know, five or six million bucks, and we have this as, you know, just another, another arrow, then we have the ability to use it. So I agree with the implementation of it, because it really just reflects what our needs are at the time that we take that vote. We're not, we're not socked into a 25% reduction here, or, you know, we have a lot of leeway, which I like. So we can respond to the markets and the fluctuation and the same. But I just think personally, I mean, we could leave it at a hundred affordable, we're not going to get those applications as long as we know that. We can always revisit it if it becomes an issue, and we start to hear feedback from certain projects, we could always change it at that point, too.
Yeah, and another suggestion on that piece of it, too, is we could just take out the percentage language within this policy, and, you know, we mentioned just having the board have the flexibility as these applications come forward. So in this case, should an affordable housing application come forward, at that point, the board can weigh it, you know, the merit of it. It would be a little more at the board's discretion, but, you know, the goal would be that they could still, or they would still have to identify the gaps in the housing production plan.
Exactly.
And list the number of applications being put forward. So that's an option for consideration as well.
Mr. Tadlebaum.
As we're a town with, under the, under the 10% threshold, and we have land available, affordable project's going to come to us. If and when that changes, it'll, it'll change it dynamic, the percentage will be more significant in terms of our decision, but, but as we're seeing right now, we're getting a lot of interest because we are under the 10%, and we do have land available. Whether we do it or not, or accept it or not, we're susceptible to these offers at this point in time now. And that's always subject to change, too, like you said.
But that number's very close to being at 10%.
It changes, yeah.
I think at this point, we, we looked at that, and we said we're actually at like 7.8%, but the problem is, on our, in a future item on tonight's agenda, when you see what's being proposed.
We'll be way over it.
No, we will not. We're lucky if we're still at the seven point, because there's so many more apartments that are not affordable.
Right.
That once you weigh in, any of those apartments.
At 110% is a moving target.
Yeah.
I have a different slant on, on the whole 10% thing. Even if we were at 11 right now, I'd still want to incentivize because of the market, you know, there are, there are people in this town that want to stay in this town, and they can't simply afford to stay in the town because of the way the market is right now. So even if we were 11%, and somebody came forward with a, you know, say, a 12-unit or 25-unit, that, that we could convince them to lay aside, even though it's market, to lay aside a portion of it for, for an affordable aspect to it, then I'd be all for that. I think that whole affordable thing has changed quite a bit.
One piece of that is, you know, not, it's related, but not so related, is when we do our update to our housing production plan, I think that sentiment is going to be very important over the next five years. And it's not that once we get to 10%, we stop and we don't think about affordable housing, but I think the conversation should shift to, what's the town's local approach to affordable housing so that we're not in this position when, where we're beholden to the state's requirements about it?
Right.
So.
We set our own policies first.
We set our own policies.
Good point.
And I do think the housing production plan is going to be meeting and working on that. And, I mean, I do think it's something, but I think the other thing, too, is to look at what becomes affordable. And when you look at that, having gone through this recently, on both ends of the spectrum, with elderly and with young people, is when you look at what those, even those HUD numbers are, you find out that, I mean, that is, it's not really a livable wage.
It's not affordable.
And so if you look at anything as affordable, it's not just affording to get in, it's how do you then maintain that? So when we're incentivizing, I mean, to get into the places, one thing, to be able to continue to live there is another. And I don't like giving people false, false hopes in their dreams.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Make a motion that we adopt the policy as presented and corrected.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, no longer a draft, thank you, with the.
Thanks, Chris.
With the typo.
I think.
Thank you.
I think it was a, we just had a healthy discussion, and the bottom line is that we need to look at this pretty regularly to see if we want to modify it in any way as we go forward.
Mm-hmm. I mean, and thinking back, my tenure on the board, we've only actually met with one group in the last three years to ask for a waiver, so it'll be interesting to see how frequently.
We have a policy.
Now that we have something. All right, next.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, exactly. Interim Town Administrator Updates.
Madam Chair, just a couple of things. The Peytonham Bridge will be closed to evicular traffic tomorrow on 6/3 from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM for some additional maintenance. And just a reminder, that town meeting is tomorrow, June 3rd, at 9:00 AM at the Dartmouth High School, 555 Bakerville Road.
So those of you that need to cross the bridge to get there, keep this in mind.
What time is it closing?
It's closing at 9:00, so we should already be at the meeting. Everyone should be at the meeting, but.
9:00 to 2:00.
9:00 to 2:00 tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure.
6/3, yes.
Just want to let you know, I will not be at the beginning of the town meeting. I have an appointment that I've been waiting months for, and I will try to get there, depending upon what time I get through my appointment.
Well, we look forward to your attendance and hope that the, your appointment goes well.
I hope so, too.
Thank you for letting us know. Anything else, Gary, from you?
That is it.
Okay. Our next item is proposed town projects. So in our packet, we have a list, and this list, I met with Gary and Dan and Mr. Vitale last week, and we went through all the possible commercial and multi-unit housing and single-family projects that we knew of, whether they were, had pulled permits, or were just in discussion. But we're always trying to get a handle on where we are and what's, what's coming. So we want to take a moment and take a look at this project. You will see, we all know about the Chick-fil-A, because we see the building going up. Fallon Medical is coming off of Cross Road, another medical complex, and.
Did you say Cross Road?
Sorry, Fontz Connor Road, here, right?
Do you know where we're at?
Fallon Medical is going to be.
Back of the Dunkin' Donuts.
At Dunkin' Donuts and Solar.
New construction?
Yes.
New construction, yeah, it's, they just got their OC, so that's.
Thank you.
So that was formerly open space. The next one is not called Family Farm.
Yeah, it's not, it's New England Farms.
New England Farm, which is?
Like a higher grade, Cumberland Farms, but it's a higher.
But a higher grade.
Cumberland Farms competitor.
Cumberland Farms competitor, so New England Farms, and will they also offer gas?
Yes, yes.
So gas as well as the convenience store, and as you see, that's going into what was Rose Motors. So we thought that was important to put.
Proposal, correct.
The proposal. And then our multi-unit housing projects that are in process. So one of the things we're going to look at is, you know, adding another column at some point, so we know where they are, like at what point, their status. When do we get on their, on the book? So we have Waterstone, which is the new name, formerly the Preserve, that's at State Road and Reed Road, and that's 288 apartments and two to three family housing. Then we have on Dartmouth Street, Delano Apartments, and that's going to be a 55-plus, that's 89 apartments. We do not know the name of this, but it's off of Fontz Connor. We do not know the name of this, but it's off of Fontz Connor Road, and that's 64 apartments. Hathaway Road, which is, we've heard about it for a number of years. They have provided a binder with the proposal, and that's gonna be apartment-style and 40B. It's 300 apartments. What you may remember about this one is that they initially had proposed to, the apartments would be located sort of down the hill. What they have now found is that it's wet down the hill, so these apartment buildings will be right on Hathaway Road, and will be, I'm gonna say, similar to the building that is near...
Creston and Pendrick.
Riccardi Pizza.
Village condos.
What is that called?
Valley condos.
The Valley condos, they'll be sort of that close.
Has there been recent activity on this?
Yes, they have come before, they've come to the planning board, yes.
Thank you.
Sherbrooke Farms on Old Westport Road, they're proposing multi-unit 40B, 156 units. The Residence at Hawthorne, which is 970 Tucker Road, again, multi-unit 40B, 147 ownership units. And then we have two on State Road, these are on either side of State Road. One will be apartment-style, one is looking at multi-units, probably a single-house, seven duplexes. We don't have numbers yet on that. And then we have some single-family projects. Bakerville Vineyards, which is looking at seven lots, and Goland Farms on Fisher Road, and those are clustered-style, single-family, and that, again, is seven lots.
Put its OSID.
Open space residential design, so that's what gives them to be that, those clustered housing.
I'd like to first say, if I may, congratulate you on the help you got to put this list together, it's fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a feat. We went back and forth trying to figure out where things are, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. ...
I'd ask a question for the attorney we had from the 40B projects about the, our limitations in, over the next three to five, to whatever, years with sewer capacity, and how much that has an ability to start or stop a project based on, and I'm not sure we got a great answer on that, because I know 40Bs have, sometimes have, we have a limited way to limit it, but I, our capacity, because I'm particularly concerned about that, and does it give us any leverage, because we have a legitimate issue with sewer capacity?
Well, one of the things, one of the takeaways was that we can't exert any demands on a 40B housing that we wouldn't exert on any other housing. So, I do know that there has been a great deal of discussion with Hathaway Road about their proposal, and in conjunction with DPW, and I do believe that through the process, that they are renaming, which was before the technical review, and they're actually gonna rename that, because it actually is happening, it happens quite early in the process, if you give me a minute, I will find it. They are going to, I'm sure Dan is sitting at home screaming at his TV right now. Unfortunately, I can't hear him. Concept, concept review, that is gonna be part of the discussion, when, in, with having DPW in attendance, is where they're coming from, what either sewer connections are in that area, what level of piping is available in that area, because in some cases, if the pipe needs to be larger on that road, it is something that can be assessed to the developer about changing that, if they need...
But that doesn't answer my question, because it's a 40B project.
Right, but this is the same, so in this concept development meeting, it would be that same discussion with Bakerville Vineyards and Goland Farms, as it would be with any of the multi-unit houses. Once we're putting on more housing in an area that has sewer, can the pipes that are there...
But that still doesn't answer my question. My question is, a 40B project, if we are under 10%, my understanding is, we don't have a lot of leverage and control over that project, or less than we would have. So, therefore, does the, our capacity, not the size of the pipes, but our system capacity and our failing system, does that give us any leverage to say to these projects, we're not ready for it yet?
I'm gonna tell you, no, it doesn't, because 40B goes beyond us and to the state, and in that very comprehensive letter that Chris Vitale has worked on recently, I think he set up, too, and Chris Michaud weighs in, Tim Barber weigh in, they have very specific and critical statements about the capacity of DPW, as well as encroachment on wetlands and aquifer, the letters that...
This goes beyond capacity, it goes beyond our ability to accept it, because our system is failing, and we're doing all we can to keep it going.
We have to be careful of saying that publicly. Our system is not failing.
No, it's failing if we do, if we don't address the capacity...
DPW and the Board of Public Works would not tell you that our system is failing.
Failing, failing because we are not, because we're over, we have to be overly aggressive on the system because of 40B.
We have to be aggressive on the system because of all the residents that live in Dartmouth currently. The number of our upper-project money that went to DPW, and any funding that we can find, that we put into DPW, is to rectify the septic, the water quality, the water treatment program that we have out there, all of that is going for the same reason. We cannot, unless we talk to the state, or the state talks to us, deter any of this building based on what we have. In the concept meetings, what Mr. Barber is doing, when he talks to these developers, is saying, we have to critically look at what's in the area. So, for example, and this was captured in the letter that went up with the Sherbrooke Farms proposal, was what is in the area for the wells, and what the wells needed in order to be operational, to take care of the needs here, what the, what do you call them, those pressurized systems, what they would need, all of that was captured. And it is not the feeling of the 40B attorney, or in any of those discussions, that those were ultimately a reason that the state would reject the 40B. Mr. Vitale?
Thank you. What about zoning issues?
So, the last letter that we submitted in for the Residence at Hawthorne, at the end of last week, talked a lot about this. At the state level, it's very likely that they'll receive the site eligibility letter, but I think this conversation's gonna be really important when the application becomes before the ZBA for the comprehensive permit. So, essentially, what we've put the applicants on notice about is, they're gonna need to get a consultant at their own expense, and/or they're gonna have to pay for our consultants to study these different developments, and be able to assign the impact of that development on our systems. And really, what we'd be looking towards is, whatever that allocation is, you know, I think it would be in the town's best interest to have that incorporated into an approval with conditions. Now, the thing that we have put Mass Housing on notice about is, that at the rate that we're getting these applications in, we're letting them know that they're probably gonna be unsupported. So, we've already made the town's position very well-known, that we don't have the capacity based on what we're getting in at this point, and so, it's going to be in the developer's best interest to come to us and be part of that solution, should it come to that. So, I think, you know, it will have to be a discussion about their contributions towards our infrastructure. I'm sorry?
What about zoning?
So, when it comes to zoning, the state largely bypasses our local zoning. Now, there's certain things that we, as a town, or the zoning board, can put on as conditions, you know, such as landscaping, you know, such as the site configuration for emergency access.
No, I'm talking about a project like Hawthorne, it's recreationally, a recreation zone property, strictly.
So...
That was in the letter.
That's correct.
It said that in 1976, and in 1979, it was both stated and then restated that that was recreational space, and that has not changed.
So, I think, so, the town's position in that letter is that the condition of that section of the property is supposed to maintain recreational use.
The whole property is recreational, the entire project...
Well, a part of the original parcel, parcel, I should say. At the time that the approval was given for the development to the south, that was one of the conditions of that approval at the period of time. Now, I think when the time comes and that application will likely go to the ZBA, you know, we would get advice from council about how to bring that to the attention of the ZBA board and present that case, but that would be something that, you know, we would probably have an executive session meeting on, we'd have a recommendation from council, so there'd be additional discussions at that point, but, you know, there's not really a lot of tools when it comes to zoning, if you go through the 40B process.
They still have to change it, and zoning was...
On that particular one, yes.
And the zoning was not done through the town, it was done at the, in Boston at that time. I don't know why they did it, but it was...
That, that one in particular is very different. The rest, when you see what it was formally, you can see that it was either open space or commercial use. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Just a point of clarification, the DPW has taken short-term plans to keep these systems going, and that, they feel strongly that they're doing the right thing to do that, so, and then the long-term plan is to either rebuild or replace the units, so that, but in that interim period is where my concern is about the capacity.
I understand that.
And I understand, when you say capacity, you know, what's in the roads, is it capable to handle that particular project because of the capacity underground, the infrastructure? But I'm just thinking more about the overall capacity, but they are points well-taken.
Well, because what's in the ground, or if it needs a pressurized system, or it needs, the units that are nearby need to be upgraded to handle it, that is something that can be offset to the builder.
No, I understand that, that's a good, but that's capacity in the neighborhood.
But that is very specific, that that can be offset to the builder. Us saying, the main facility can't handle this, and therefore you need to contribute, is not something that we can...
No, I would, that's not, contribute to what, a system that can't take the capacity, period?
Right, but that's something we can't hold them to. But, it's all the more reason why we need to invest, short-term and long-term, into an upgrade or...
Exactly.
New build. But when you look at this, and this is all, some of these are very new, I have said before that we will meet with the zoning, the ZBA, and I think it's gonna be very important that we meet with the ZBA and the 40B attorney together, so that we're all educated on what we can and cannot do in going through these projects. But 40B specifically goes directly to ZBA.
Yep.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we will keep this, keep this form going and updating it as necessary, and we will, Proposed Town Projects is going to be a permanent line item on our agenda, so you will keep seeing it.
Do we need to take any of these off the old business list? Anyone that's on there, should we consider?
Fallon Building's completed.
I'm sorry, what?
Fallon Building was completed, so it's not in process.
I didn't...
No, no, I'm talking about under old business, the...
Under old business.
Oh, sorry.
So, Fallon is built, you're saying?
Yeah.
You wanna add the, this list to this old business list?
Well, the interesting thing is, I wanted to add Lincoln Park to this list, which I know is built, but it's not complete, so that'll be something. All right, so you wanna run down under item, Article 5, old business, the 40B update? It's gonna be part of that proposal.
I think you should stay on the, this agenda, under old business, because as you see, these applications are coming in, and I don't think it should be removed, should stay on there, and then just update that under Town Projects piece of it. That's my recommendation.
All right, so do we have anything on 40B?
Other than the other two proposals that we just talked about, Hathaway Road and 970 being submitted.
300 is not...
Okay, so just make sure that as you see them, they come through, what's being submitted to the state, please read through it, because our departments are taking a lot of time to put their information, and being very specific to the project, so, all right. Bliss Corner.
No new updates?
Lake Nokachoke.
No new updates?
Municipal Broadband.
No new updates?
STEP Title 5 amendments.
No new updates?
All right. The minutes of May 5th, I will say, I did read through, I thought it captured our...
Motion to approve.
Evening, motion to approve by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, passes. Select Board Updates, Mr. O'Neil?
I'll pass, thank you.
I'm sorry, you were drinking, I didn't realize, sorry, just swallowed.
Choking.
Choke, choke. Do you have anything, Mr. O'Neil?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. McDonald? Mr. Mickelson?
So, I'm still, I'm a little befuddled by all this 40B issues, and what we can do pretty much not do, and it seems that our hands are tied at every corner, and that's also, it's via our governor and the state is forcing these projects down our throat. So, that being said, you wonder, you have, you know, beautiful, some of these properties are beautiful. Would it be in our best interest to, if we can't say anything against the 40B, but they haven't, some of these, they're just in the initial stages, so they're not permitted, nothing's really done. Could the town take a property? I know, I know the answer, I know that for a fact, that our town attorney said, we can't. So, for an example, could we take Hawthorne Country Club? Either buy it or take it.
And what did you say the town attorney told you?
He said, taking it.
We could do it, right, at this stage. So, it's an investment in the town of Dartmouth. You know, Roger Tugus and Ray Peck, many years ago, bought Round Hill, and they all thought they were crazy, these two guys. What beautiful place that we have right now, the most gorgeous beach in New England, without a doubt. So, I'm looking at, many years after, I'm long gone, that if we don't invest in the town, David's project tomorrow at town meeting, we're gonna need property to build new schools. If we buy or take that property, when we're ready to build a school, or an updated town hall, or whatever type of building that the town of Dartmouth would need, we already own the land, and we know the land's gonna go up every day and every minute. So, I'm looking at the old Roger Tugus and Ray Peck, let's invest, invest in the town's future. Just, that's my thought.
And that's not the first time you've talked about that particular...
Talked about it for quite a while.
Particular property.
We could take that property, the DPW could have, make walking trails, you could have bike trails, you could have picnic areas where families could come, and that's... a magnificent piece of property, and come with their family and enjoy, enjoy a Sunday afternoon, or a Saturday, or a weekday, and, and...
Well, I certainly do think it's worth a discussion, only because, as I told you, the paperwork that did go up did contain the, sort of the restrictions that are on that parcel...
Yep.
From 1976 and 1979, reiterated in 1979.
If we had, if we owned the property, we wouldn't have to worry about the restrictions.
So, well, as long as we weren't buying the property to then build on it, though I guess we would have.
Not, not right away, we don't need it.
But I think that we, we'll put that down for a discussion with Mr. Savistano at our next meeting.
The topic is Hawthorne Country Club.
But thank you for your time, everyone.
That's fine. Mr. Tattelbaum?
I'll sit.
All right.
Looking forward to town meeting.
Yep, 9 o'clock.
I just, we're not done yet. I have two things. I received a letter to the Select Board, and I will read it. Dear members of the Dartmouth Select Board, at an, at the Older American Month Luncheon on May 16th, Stanley Mickelson stood up and started reading a citation from the Select Board. I was wondering why my name was being mentioned. My daughter took a video of me, and when I watched it, all you could see was confusion on my face. This definitely was a surprise. Being a member of the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly and all the volunteers has been a pleasure and rewarding experience. Everyone is dedicated to doing all they can to give back to the community. I have worked alongside Maria Connor for many years. We have a little office at the Dartmouth Council on Aging Building and spend lots of time trying to think up ideas to enrich the lives of seniors and veterans of our community. Maria is the bones of the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly. She remembers everything and is the most thoughtful person that I have ever come across. That said, I never in my life would have thought I would be the recipient of her giving nature. She is so unbelievable. Anyone who comes in contact with her realizes this immediately. I want to thank you for your consideration in providing that beautiful citation. With the world in the mess that it's in, it is so gratifying to know that there are still lots of thoughtful people in it. Sincerely, Ellie White. So thank you, Eleanor. And everything she does, this was a citation that we, as the Select Board, did write. We did not mention it, because Maria asked that it be a surprise, so I was thrilled to see...
Very surprised.
That it was a surprise.
It was, yeah.
So that was very exciting. The other piece that I have is just, again, letting everyone know, one, tomorrow is town meeting, and two, Friday, this Friday evening, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., we will be honoring Warren G. Hathaway with the opening of the project down at the Town Landing at the Ponigan City, at the Ponigan City Town Landing. So we do invite everyone down. We are going to have speakers at, starting the program around 4:30, and there will be hot dogs and soda available, so come on down.
Yeah, can't go.
And there is information within our packets for us to read, so you will see that there's a lot of information from ever source, but also in there, the Dartmouth COA Board nominations are also in there.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. McDonald.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mickelson. We will see you all tomorrow.
Good folks.
Oh. Are we all in agreement?
Yes, yes.
All vote in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Adjourn.[1769.23]